The Town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening. Welcome to the Plainville Town Council meeting. Today is Monday, February 7th, 2022, 7:00 PM. If you'll all please stand for the pledge, I'll ask Vice Chair Underwood to lead us.
My claudial allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we do not have any presentations, nor do we have a public hearing, so may I have a motion to approve the minutes of our previous meeting, please?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the minutes, January 18th, 2022, special and regular meeting, and January 19th, 2022, special meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Announcements or reports? Do we have any announcements or reports tonight?
Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
I did want to report to the council tonight that after talking with some members on the Parks and Rec Board, Courtney Hewitt, our Recreation Director, and Robert, we've decided that rather than fill the current vacancy for that board, we're going to reduce the number of members to seven.
Oh, okay. So there's seven full-time members there at this point?
Yes, that would make them full.
That works for them, I guess.
Yeah, I was, well, I talked with Courtney about it, and she feels that it would be easier to meet quorum of four people as opposed to five if we added an eighth member.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks for that. Does anybody have anything else to report? Rosemary, this is not your week?
No, not my, next time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving along. Appointments and resignations. We have one appointment tonight.
Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
Motion to appoint David Lewicki Jr., 42 Franklin Avenue, as a probationary firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Do we have any other appointments tonight? No? Okay. Board of, Town Attorney, Attorney Mastiany, do we have anything tonight?
I do not.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good to see you. Okay, Robert, report of the town manager.
I do have a couple of items I'd like to bring to the council's attention this evening. The first is the Crooked Street Bridge repairs, which are proposed to be done by the State Department of Transportation. And they have notified the town of their plans to rehabilitate the Crooked Street Bridge over Route 84. Work includes the replacement of the deck joints, repairs to steel members, field painting of steel elements, and repairs to spalled and cracked areas in the substructure. The work is not anticipated to have a significant impact to traffic, as Crooked Street would remain open to traffic for the duration of the project. The work will involve temporary shoulder and lane closures as needed. It is anticipated that this work will begin in the spring of 2023, so it's still a ways off, but...
Sure, thank you.
Put it on your calendar. Next item I have is the American Rescue Plan Act Planning Committee Recommendations. The American Rescue Plan passed by Congress has allocated $5,189,198 to Plainville in response to the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. The Treasury Department has issued rules on how these monies can be spent. There are five general categories where these monies can be utilized. One, responding to public health emergency and the negative economic impacts of COVID-19. Two, the negative, excuse me, two, the replacement of lost revenue. Three, provide premium pay. Four, water and sewer infrastructure. And five, broadband infrastructure. After considerable review of each of these categories, the ARPA Committee is recommending that the town council choose to utilize the replace of lost revenue option. This category was chosen because it is simpler and does not require extensive reporting requirements. It also provides for additional latitude in how the monies can be spent. The Treasury Department is allowing municipalities to receive our total allocation based upon a standard allowance. Each municipality is granted a standard allowance of $10 million for lost revenue calculation. Because Plainville's allocation is less than $10 million, the town can choose our entire grant under this category. Revenue received under the replace loss of revenue category can be spent, these can be spent on what they call government services, which is broadly defined as any service that is traditionally provided by a government to its residents. This can also include capital expenditures. The ARPA Committee has also developed preliminary, a preliminary list of where the monies could be spent if the replace of lost revenue option is chosen. This list is, this list primarily includes larger capital improvements that have been in the five-year capital plan. They include projects for the fire department, school facilities, public works, the police department, and other miscellaneous items. Municipalities are required to seek public input on the proposed use of the American Rescue Plan monies. There is an item in their new business to conduct a public hearing on the use of the American Plan, Rescue Plan monies from Monday, actually, it's Tuesday, excuse me, February 22nd at 7:00 PM in the municipal center. A copy of the proposed list of recommendations by the ARPA Committee will also be put on the town website at www.plainvillect.com. I also plan to get some notification on our, on the, on the social media pages as well, and issue a press release so it could get in the newspapers additionally.
Robert, can you just expand a little bit on who was part of the committee? There were a number of your department heads, a couple of people, three, three from the council, Mr. Wazorko, Mr. Underwood, and myself. So, just so, we have a little background on the makeup of the committee and what they represented?
Yep. Myself, as manager, the Assistant Town Manager, Matt Daskel. We had Don Moschini when he was working for us from the Public Works Department, Joe Aloso from the Water and Sewer Department, Water Pollution Control. We had John Bossy, who's the Town Engineer, Director of Technical Services. Help me out with one or two other people, but...
Sean, Terry, you never...
Yeah, we had Sean Cohen from the, Sean Cohen was there from the Senior Center.
Was the library represented?
Yep. Trish Thompson from the library. And we also had...
We had input from our fire department.
And Roberta Brown from Youth Services.
Yep, okay.
So it was a pretty extensive, you know, covering most of, cross-section as well.
Okay. Thanks.
Next item I have is the White Oak Redevelopment Project Update. Town staff continues to make progress on this project. In conjunction with the Connecticut Brownfield Land Bank Group, the town drafted and published a request for proposals on December 8th, 2021, to qualified and Connecticut Department of Administrative Services pre-approved firms. These firms were cross-referenced with the list of finalists in the initial White Oak RFP for a full, that was used for the full environmental site assessment in 2017. The purpose of the RFP was the following: updating the Phase 1 environmental site assessment report as required by the Connecticut statute, finalization of a remedial action plan in coordination with the development plan submitted by Manafort Newport, noting both abatement, oversight, controls, and costs, and a timeline to bring the site to a level deemed acceptable by the state for the intended reuse, and also to provide a cost estimate for preparation and submission to the environmental conditions assessment form. Following review of submissions, town staff has decided to move forward with interviewing VL companies and tie-in bond as the two firms who articulated and established the most complete understanding of the town's goals while also providing the most direct, concise, and affordable cost estimates. Interviews will take place via Zoom with town and Connecticut Land Bank staff later this week with a goal to bring a recommendation to the town council to your February 22nd meeting. With the town, with the town's commitment to ownership during the remediation process, town staff continues to work with Connecticut DECD staff to adjust the financial assistance agreement for the previously ordered $1.17 million in Brownfield remediation grant funding. The now-direct agreement will simplify the process, having grant dollars and invoices be managed by the town, much like the previous Brownfield Assessment Grant Funding, while allowing the Connecticut Land Bank to remain in their previously approved advisory and guidance role, assisting the town during the remediation phase of the project. Most recently, town staff applied to the DECD Connecticut Community Challenge Grant ahead of the January 14th, 2022 deadline. Working with representatives from Manafort Newport, the application was for an additional $1.2 million in state funding, combined with the required 50% match funds to be supplied by Manafort Newport, bringing the potential total of additional funding to $1.8 million. These funds have been identified as potential way to offset construction costs related to the realignment installation of the entrance-exit boulevard, traffic light as may be deemed necessary by the Connecticut DOT, paving, utility installation, site work, a covered CT fastback bus stop vestibule on West Main Street, and access to open space on the north side of the property. The decision on the grant application is expected from DECD, hopefully in April of 2022, just a couple of months off. Finally, the proposed agreement between the town and Manafort Newport, based on the previously agreed term sheet that was approved by the town council, has been drafted and sent to the developer. Their response on the proposed language in the agreement is expected later this week. The next item I have is the Honor Heights Sewer Update. Several developments have recently occurred regarding the possible installation of sewer lines into the Honor Heights neighborhood. The sewers would serve 84 homes that were constructed with septic systems, most of which are 40 to 50 years old. First, natural gas lines are being extended to service the development of the Willowbrook Estates project located just north of Honor Heights. Town staff, including myself, have contacted Eversource Gas to see if they would consider installing natural gas lines to Honor Heights in the event that sewers are constructed. Eversource representatives indicated that they would study the possibility of extending the gas lines and get back to Plainville in approximately 60 days. Second, town staff preliminary cost estimates to install sewers is between $1.2 and $1.4 million. It is anticipated that beneficial assessments could generate approximately $840,000 of that, of that estimated amount, and an average of $10,000 per home, leaving a balance of between $360,000 and $560,000. Plainville currently has over $600,000 in Connecticut LOSAP grant monies that could be utilized to cover the remaining balance. Finally, if the town council desires to consider this expansion, a public hearing on the proposed expansion could be held as early as April. If approved, construction would not be expected to occur, at least until next summer. We'll probably bring something to the council in, perhaps on February 22nd, maybe, maybe in March, to set the public hearing for, for it, if that's what the council's desire is to move forward on it.
Robert, one question regarding the Eversource gas extension. Who would be paying for that to happen? Is that another assessment that the homeowners have to absorb, or how does that work, the gas line?
Eversource, Eversource gas would do it at their own cost.
Okay.
They, they would give people three years to connect under, with, with some, you know, monetary advantages, where they would bring it into their home if they did it in a, in a timely fashion. And they would probably do some survey work of people to see if they would be interested in it before, before committing to doing it as well.
Okay, but Eversource would be...
Eversource would, would fund the...
Pay for it to get put in initially. Okay.
They would take the risk with that.
Great, thanks.
The fact that this development is happening just to the north and brings the gas lines closer to Honor Heights, which makes it more cost-effective as far as their risk is concerned.
Okay.
So, sounded pretty, you know, they would take a serious run at it, take a look at it. Next item I have is the Whiting Street Repaving Project. Last May, Plainville received preliminary approval from Capital Region Council Governments to receive $2.8 million in what's called not LOSAP, but LOTSEP grant for the reconstruction of Whiting Street from Broad Street to Fairview Avenue, contingent upon State of Connecticut Department of Transportation's final approval. The State DOT has completed their review of the project's conceptual design and has directed the town to modify the construction methods from what's known as total reconstruction to major rehabilitation, milling, and repaving. The DOT directive has reduced the cost per linear foot of the roadway repaired. Thus, as a byproduct of this modification, CROG has agreed to permit the limits of the construction to be extended subtly, subtly towards Fairview, you know, from beyond Fairview Avenue. The impact of this decision is the town will not have to use road bond monies for a good portion of the repaving of Whiting Street from Fairview to East Street, Route 10, as previously planned.
Great.
The Engineering Department is currently revising the conceptual design to reflect the State Department of Transportation's directive and will be establishing new limits of construction. A revised Whiting Street design is expected to be completed and resubmitted to the DOT by the end of February, per their request. Originally, it was believed that construction would occur during the 2022, this upcoming construction season. As a result of the DOT directive, construction will most likely occur early in the 2023 construction season. So the net result is that they didn't feel that the total reconstruction was necessary, that just doing a, a milling and a paving would be sufficient. We really don't have a, I'm not sure we agree with them 100%, but it's their money. And, but we, we're able to, with the money that's saved by not doing that major work, we're able to extend the project to probably cover a good portion, if not all, of Whiting Street, which will save the town money for not having to use what we were going to use our road bond monies for, so we could use those monies somewhere else and extend our dollars. So, I think overall, we'll have a good road there that's, maybe not last 30 years, maybe only lasts 20 years. So, so. The next item I have is road bond discussion, slightly different. Town staff is preparing for the upcoming paving season, utilizing year two of the Road Bond II Program. So this would be our seventh year, for those who are counting. Town staff is requesting authorization from the town council to utilize the, what we call the equipment rental rates outlined in the State of Connecticut contract for roadway milling of streets to be paved during the 2022 construction season. The total amount of the authorization shall not exceed $150,000. The funds used to purchase these services will be drawn from the roadway bond account. There is an item in their new business that would authorize the town staff to utilize state contract bid equipment rental rates for roadway milling of streets not to exceed $150,000. We're looking for some flexibility with regards to who we might hire. Under that state bid contract, there's several contractors that are there. We would pick the contractor that could best coordinate our efforts, because the timing of when they do the milling and paving is, is almost as important as, as the cost itself, because we want them to mill and pave at a time when we can come right in and do the work that we need to do to repave. So, the authorization tonight is just to allow us to use state contract bid prices not to exceed $150,000, and have the flexibility of choosing the contractor under that, under that plan. Next item I have is the town manager's fiscal '23 proposed budget. Town staff and I have been working on the fiscal year '23 town budget. There are still several moving parts to be decided, including the Board of Education budget and the governor's proposed budget, which historically has provided significant state revenues to support local town budgets. The governor is, I guess, presenting his budget to the state this Wednesday, so that will help us fill in a couple of missing pieces. The fiscal year '23 town budget will be presented to the town council on Monday, March 7th, at 7:00 PM in the town council chambers, right here. A public hearing on the town manager's proposed budget is being recommended to be held on Wednesday, March 9th, at 7:00 PM in the same town council chambers. Work sessions on the budget are recommended to be held on March 14th, 15th, 16th, 22nd, and 23rd. The review of the Board of Education's recommended budget is planned for the work session on March 16th. These work sessions are open to the public and will also be taped for broadcast on the Nutmeg TV Network. At this time, with your permission, I'd like to bring forth Chief Chris Bangley to give a, a little, I guess, update on his long, one first-week tenure.
While I survive. Here, I'll take my clock if you don't mind. Thank you very much, town manager. So, I have a couple of things to...
Chief, if you could just hit the button, there's a, turn on your mic. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
So, first week is in the books. And I must say that I'm singularly impressed with the amount of work that the officers are doing, and with the professionalism that they're already displaying. They've been nothing but kind and generous and open to me. And so, very quickly, I realized I'm in the right place. This weekend especially was very busy. They had seven arrests over the weekend. They had three domestic arrests in one hour. And actually, as, as I was preparing for here, we got a call for a gentleman that was wanted by Farmington for stabbing somebody last night, and they were on the lookout for him. We found him in Plainville, and thankfully, four officers were working, got there right away, and took him into custody without a problem, turned him over to Farmington. So, you know, very, very busy. I was assured that this isn't how it is every single week. But if it is, that's okay with me. They're doing a great job, and I'm very proud of them. Several traffic complaints came in. I did talk with Mr. Lee today about some of them. Some are outstanding on Webster Place. And then there was another call that came in for a right-hand turn on Red near Timothy's?
Yeah, Cook Street.
Cook Street. So, we'll have our traffic unit involved in that as well, and I'll go out there and take a look at what the issue is, and get back, obviously, to the, the citizen with recommendations. Our newly hired officer, Paige Erdman, her first day at the Connecticut Police Academy was today. The first two weeks were by Zoom. She did nine-hour Zoom meetings every day for two weeks. So, regardless of how much they're going to make her run over there, I'm sure she prefers that much more than sitting in a classroom trying to learn. So, thankfully, they have her up there, and she starts her, her academy today. And I'll get you the dates of her proposed graduation once I have those. Also, just another note on a call for service that happened last week, and I want to congratulate Officer Acarpio, Lieutenant Mullins, Officer Belagerzki, and Sergeant Huntley. They went on a call for a woman that was supposed to be at work, and she didn't show up. And so, they went to the house, couldn't find her inside. There was no sign of any entry. They couldn't see anything inside the windows. And so, sometimes, as an law enforcement officer, you're stuck, it's very difficult to make that decision. Do we break into somebody's house? And sometimes there's nobody inside, or do we find somebody? So, they made the decision, rightly so, to go in and break, break into the house, gain entry. They found her on the second floor. She had a stroke the day before. And she had a stroke while they were there. So, the ambulance got there very, very quickly. And we have reports from the hospital that, without their intervention, that quickly, she would have died. So, I want to give those officers my congratulations for swift decisive action, which saved a woman's life. And that's all I have.
Great. Well, that was a busy week.
Yes. Yes, it is.
Thanks for coming tonight and reporting to us.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate it, certainly. Thank you again.
I have a couple of other items. One is a COVID-19 update. You know, a lot, a lot of moving parts, even, even this evening, with the governor's announcement that he was recommending that, or giving, I guess, the towns the option to make a decision with regards to whether there should be masks, masking of students after, I believe it's February 28th. More to come on that. A vaccination clinic will be held at the Plainville Senior Center on February 18th between 9:30 and noon. The Pfizer and Moderna First, Second, and Boosters will be offered by Hartford Healthcare. Appointments are required. Contact the Senior Center at 860-747-5728 to make an appointment. There is also a vaccination clinic scheduled for this coming Saturday, February 12th, from 1:00 to 6:00 PM, at the Congregational Church located at 130 West Main Street. Walk-ins will be accepted as well at this clinic. And I believe there's one or two others. Just didn't get them updated before, before tonight's meeting. So, there's, seems like there's, you know, enough opportunities for people to get vaccinations and booster shots, and still encouraging people to do that as well. So. Route 372 paving plans, this was a new one that came across my desk this afternoon. It's not in your paperwork, so, but I did, we did hand it, we did give you a handout with regards to that. The State DOT has informed the town that they plan to repave Route 372 in Plainville this summer. Route 372 goes from Route 10, or East Street, right where, I guess, Walgreens is, right through the center of Plainville, all the way to Route 72. The length of paving will be approximately 1.55 miles. The repaving will cover over seven, will cover over the seven decorative crosswalks that we, that we installed in 2014. And I believe if I gave you a list of where those seven decorative crosswalks are located. The town would be responsible for repaving the decorative sidewalks if desired. The estimated cost for the replacement is $62,000 to $78,000. This is somewhat higher than it was in 2014. There are monies available in the Town Aid Road account to reinstall the decorative crosswalks. The Town Aid Road account is funded by state grants. We do have a relatively healthy balance in that account. I believe that those crosswalks are very helpful to the, to those looking to cross Main Street. I think it also gives motorists, you know, a, a good notice that this, that, you know, that they're, that it is a crosswalk. And I think it adds a little bit of color to the downtown as well. And I would recommend that the town council consider using Town Aid Road monies to reinstall these crosswalks when the work is done sometime this summer. The more advanced notice we have with regards to whether we're going to replace those, the more we can find people to perform that work. So, I'm not necessarily looking for a decision this evening, because I just received this today, and wanted to, and, and receive the, the update from John Bossy, and I appreciate the fact that he took the initiative to, you know, to list this and get it out there, so to give the council plenty of time to consider this, this potential expenditure and, and what I would consider from my perspective and recommendation. That's all I have to report. At the moment, I'd like to turn it over to Matt Daskel for happenings, and then be available to answer any questions you may have for either of us.
Thank you.
Good evening, three, that's a little bit high. Good evening, through you, Town Manager Lee and Council Chairperson.
Thank you.
This evening, I have a limited number of happenings. These are all Senior Center happenings. We will have further information available online, but I'll give a few highlights. All of these can be registered by calling the Senior Center at 860-747-5728, or online at scheduleplus.com/plainville. So, a few highlights. Robert mentioned the previous COVID booster clinic that's coming in the coming month. They also have Something Old, Something New, Connecticut Weddings Through the Ages. Partnering with the Connecticut Historical Society, for free, they're going to offer a historical look at weddings. It includes artifacts, events, photographs, prints, and an opportunity to explore the quote-unquote "traditional wedding" of Connecticut past. This will come with a free piece of wedding cake, as well as a champagne toast at the end. So, an exciting opportunity for those that might be interested. They're also offering some exciting events, weather permitting, and this is either exciting, or for those who would wish to stay warm, may not be. But winter snowshoeing or walking at Sessions Woods is a forthcoming event, Monday, February 21st, 21st, from 10:00 AM, starting at 10:00 AM. Cost is $3. They do have snowshoes available for those to borrow if the weather is permitting. They will be taking a 60-to-90-minute snowshoeing or walking journey through Sessions Woods. It's supposed to be an easy pace and relatively moderate trail. Please wear multiple layers to stay warm. And then finally, their fitness classes continue this month. I believe I've reported on these before, but there's a variety of fitness opportunities should you decide that outdoor activity was not your preference for this time of year. If there's any questions, I'm more than willing to answer them.
Thanks, Matt. Thank you, Robert and Matt. Does anybody have any questions for either Matt or Robert with their report tonight?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Just a couple of questions regarding the, the ARPA Committee. The first question, Robert, if you could kind of elaborate on how you're going to be publicizing the public hearing that's coming up. And then secondly, what's sort of the projected timeline? Do we assume that there's going to be a public hearing, then the committee would meet again after that, before the final list is brought to the town council? Just those two questions.
My plan is to issue a press release later, later this week, whether it's tomorrow or the next day, to get into the... or the next day, to get into the newspapers. We'll put the information on our town webpage. We will also publish it on, on social media, probably on, I generally get it on Plainville Talks, Plainville Talks Uncensored, and Parents of Plainville as well. That's probably, you know, my plan, and certainly open to any other suggestions that you might have. We certainly do our email blast to those who, who ask for, you know, to be, to be updated on, on actions that are happening. We will, you know, post a public hearing notice as well. That'll be posted by the town clerk, and that, that'll get posted outside, you know, on our bulletin boards, and I know that there's notices to go out to people who are in arrest, who have signed up for, for that as well. So that's the plan for getting, for getting it publicized.
Thank you. Can we, following along that same thought process, Rosemary, can we put maybe a flyer or something at our library and at the Senior Center? I know that you'll be sending out, you know, emails to those organizations, but just for folks that come into the library or that visit the Senior Center that might have an interest in learning about where the dollars are going, those are two public areas. I can't think of any, I don't know if you wanted, now the schools, they have their whole program of money they're spending already, but wherever you think it would be appropriate to put, you know, just a flyer or a brief notice that we're having this public hearing about these topics, maybe it would get people to say a little more, they didn't know about it, but...
Yeah, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Steve, Steve LePage, and see if there's, get some, some publicity out through his, you know, area as well.
Yeah.
And yes, putting a flyer at the Senior Center and, you know, flyers that people could take with them and at the...
The library.
The library, you know, yeah. Those are good ideas.
Okay. Great.
And then the timeline question, Robert?
Yeah, I leave that up to the council, you know, if, you know, the council could either refer it back to, to, to the, to the ARPA committee to see if there's, you know, I guess it really depends on what the feedback is from the, from the public hearing. If there's, you know, if people are generally supportive of what was done, the council may say, okay, we could, we could take it from here, but if you want the, the committee to retake a look at it, they could certainly go back and come back with a recommendation to the council.
Right. We wouldn't be taking a vote, though, on the 22nd?
No.
No, okay.
No, not looking for a vote on the 22nd.
The earliest, who the next meeting, fine. Thank you.
Right.
And we have, once we make some decisions about, you know, where generally the dollars are going to be allocated, there's a fair, fairly long period of time within which they need to be spent as well.
That's correct.
A few years, correct?
We have at least three years, yes.
Okay. So this is sort of a longer-term outlook.
There, there are some projects that we'd like to, you know, move, move forward right away, and then there's others that could, that could, you know, get spaced out over time. There's, some of them would pay for, for some costs that have already incurred.
Okay.
Because we are able to go back to March of, I believe, 2020, as far as the costs are concerned. You know, expenditures that, anything that happened after that, you know, which is almost two years ago. So, and we have a couple of projects on that list. I have spoken to the, to the fire chief, I've spoken to the police chief, you know, about, about this. I know that they'll, they'll be planning on attending the public hearing in case there's any questions about their projects. I've, I've had some conversations with superintendent of schools with regards to some of their major projects that are on that list as well.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, I expect there to be some representation from people who, who are scheduled to get some of the funding.
Okay. Any other questions for the town manager or for Matt? Robert, I do, I have a question on a different topic. This has to do with mask wearing. I know that the governor has come out with a statement regarding schools, which is to the end of February, and then it actually ends up, I believe, it's in the hands of the local boards of education to make some of those determinations, if that's going to actually transpire the way he is recommending at this point in time. However, I'm interested in our town facilities. Are we guided by our local health district in terms of mask wearing, or what, what are our, you know, who's, who's given us the guidance in terms of where we're going to wear them in the library and the Senior Center and, and this building as well?
Yes, we get guides from, from our regional health district. I had a conversation with the director, health director, last week.
Okay.
Asked her how, what our thoughts were about it. She said, you know, things are getting better, they, they certainly are trending in the right direction. She, she leaf-recommended for the next couple of weeks to keep it in place.
Okay.
We don't have to follow her direction.
Right.
It's only a recommendation. You know, you know, my, my thoughts are that, you know, the governor is recommending February 28th. I think that February 28th is a good target to go for, you know, unless, unless conditions change, but, you know, you know, I would shoot for February 28th to, 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 to remove the mandate. Now, as far as the library is concerned, you know, that's, that's under the auspices of the trustees, the library board of trustees. I know that they're trying to follow the guidance of what happens in the schools, so if the Board of Education decides that they're going to lift the mask mandate, then, then, you know, because they have a children's room, you know, they're somewhat concerned about, you know, that. So, so I think they're going to follow the guidance of the Board of Education, and the same thing with the Senior Center, because they're, you know, a more vulnerable population. So as far, you know, so, you know, I don't, I didn't have an issue with them following, you know, that plan, which was, which was to follow whatever, whatever is going on in the schools. Trustees, library board of trustees, I think they have, you know, they have the, the authority to decide what's going to happen at the library.
Okay.
You know, as far as the Senior Center is concerned, certainly if, you know, we, we could direct the Senior Center not to, you know, if, for example, the Board of Education chose to continue mask wearing, you know, if the council was of a mind to say, well, as far as the Senior Center is concerned, we, we don't want to make that amendment, you know, you could disagree with that, you know, decision. That's just a...
Sure.
...a recommendation of, of the, of the Senior Center Director, which I, I didn't have, I didn't have any problem with at the time.
Okay.
So I guess a lot may hinge on what happens with the Board of Education.
The last, last week's infection rate for the state was somewhere just a little north of 4%, so it's dramatically different from even where it was in December. December, it was up to 20 some odd, but perhaps there's fewer people getting tested now, which changes some of these metrics that, that are being reported. But do you get specific metrics regarding Plainville from our health district? We had gotten them some time ago.
Yeah, and we can get them online as well. I haven't checked them recently. I generally check the, you know, the infection rate per 100,000, you know, that would put you, you know, and, you know, if you're over 15 of 100,000, you, you're in the red category. We still continue to be in the red category, as it does the rest of the state, so while the infection rate is down, technically, we're still in the red, so to speak, although the numbers are coming down.
Mm-hmm.
I believe we were in the 20s, you know, last, you know, for the last two weeks, and that was as of last Thursday. So once we get them below 15 was, you know, after two weeks was when we were, when I was planning to take the mask mandate off to begin with, as far as the town buildings are concerned, but, you know, it may happen sooner, you know, if we're going to, if we're going to go towards our goal of February 28th. I can get, I can get the latest statistics for you. I, I've been...
Actually, you know, not, not a rush, but just curious about where, at one point, we were really not doing very well, but if things have changed considerably, that would be nice to know.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. If anybody, if there are no further questions from anybody, I'm going to move along. Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Matt, for your report, both of you, and Chief, thank you as well again. This is, the next item is our public comment section. During this time, we ask the public to come to the microphone, but quite honestly, I don't see anybody from, in the audience that would, that's part of the public comment. So I'm going to, right now, not have a public comment section tonight. There's nobody here to participate, so we'll move along. We don't have any old business items, so we'll move on to our new business items. Item number one, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chairman.
Right ahead.
Bid, bid number 2022-15B Rental of Service Equipment for Roadway Construction Milling, of Service and Equipment for Roadway Construction for Roadway Milling During the 2022 Paving Season in the Amount Not to Exceed $150,000.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, number two.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to establish a public hearing on Tuesday, February 22nd, at 7:00 PM in the municipal center to hear public comment regarding the American Rescue Plan Act Planning Committee's recommendation use of funds.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any, any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, number three, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to establish a public hearing on Wednesday, March 9th, at 7:00 PM in the municipal center to hear public comment on the town manager's FY 2023 proposed budget.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, item number four, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to establish the following special meetings of the town council for the purpose of considering an action upon the FY 2023 budget, March 14th, 15th, 16th, 22nd, and 23rd, 2022, in the municipal center at 6:30 PM.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? I assume everybody's okay with these times. If anything should change, of course, you'll let us know. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And number five, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 12. Mr. Lee, do you have anything else for us tonight?
Just two items. I, let's, town council members know individually today, but I've appointed Mike Ferrara to be the roadway superintendent, replacing Dominic Moschini, who retired in December. Mike has worked for us for about a dozen years. He was second in charge for a couple of years, and I think he'll do a fine job. I'm going to invite him to the February 22nd town council meeting, so he can put a, a face to a name and, and introduce you to the town council, for those of you who don't know him. And I think he's excited about the position, and I think, you know, he looks forward to filling relatively large shoes and, but he, he's, he's done some, some training under, under Dominic, so I think that, that will carry through going forward. I think he's done a pretty good job, good job going forward as far as, as far as the, as far as the snow removal and those kinds of items. He's been, you know, responsive and enthusiastic, so I'll bring, I'll try to bring him to the next council meeting if he's available. The second item is, is I do plan on putting in an application to the State Department of Transportation to put in some rapid flashing beacons at the crosswalk located near the high school. You may recall that we had some, some, some accidents, injuries for students back in the fall that were crossing the street, and I did contact the DOT after that because they're, it's their, their road and they, you know, they're the ones who control what, what happens on their street. One of the items that they, they pointed out was that if the town wanted to consider installing rapid beacons, rapid flashing beacons, we have two of them located in town already that it would be on the town's cost. We're going to file an application to see if they'll allow us to do it. Again, those monies would, would be, could be available to come out of the Town Aid Road account as well, which is off-budget, not, you know, not part of the general fund budget, and I think it would be something that would be very beneficial to that area. We, we really haven't had too many problems at that crosswalk over the, you know, 25, 30 years that it's been there, but it seems like, you know, in today's society, that people are not paying attention, both those that are driving and even those that are walking. So too many distractions out there, and I think that we'll try to, you know, make it a little bit better, but we do, you know, caution people who are both driving and walking that when you're crossing a major road or driving down a major road and there's, and there's crosswalks, to be, to be careful because, you know, you know, we're hearing, you know, time and time again about people getting, you know, getting hit, you know, in the street in pedestrian accidents. Some of it has happened in Plainville, but, you know, it's happened, we're not, we're not unique, certainly, but those are two items that, both the appointment and the application to see if we can get that rapid flashing beacon sign put in for the crosswalk are two items that I wanted to bring up, you know, by the end of this meeting, so.
Okay. Any comments? I think that's a good idea.[1737.83]